Okay, so we're live. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. This is the special meeting of, special meeting called of the Board of County Commissioners for May 7th. It is 10:00 AM, and so I will do a salute to the flag. And Madam Vice Chair, will you lead us, please?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung is present via telephone.
Thank you.
Von Hartung, present via telephone.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney David Watts Vial via telephone.
Here.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to item three.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do see some public comments signed in. So, Madam Clerk, I have Ms. Anne Marie Grant has left a voicemail.
Yes, she has, Mr. Chair. And she also submitted her comments in writing, which I will place on the record following her comment.
Please, thank you. If you'll play that now.
5/7/2020 Washtau County Commissioners Meeting Public Comment. Anne Marie Grant's sister, Thomas Purdy, hogtied by Reno PD, which every single page of the Rep Hogg Rule Manual says never use to hogtie a human being. And then he was asphyxiated to death while hogtied at Washtau County Jail, October 4th, 2015. I recently read Dr. Randall Todd's letter to your Board of Health. A few comments of his struck, stuck out to me. One is, I have lived my life by the maxim that bad things persist when good people do nothing. Thus, my faithful submission of comments and suggestions to your board that go ignored. He also stated Kevin Dix is unqualified and doesn't value transparency. That seems to be a reoccurring theme in Washtau County, lack of transparency and accountability. Truth be told, I was not shocked to hear this, nor was I shocked to hear that the county commissioner, Lucy, believes the current staff, according to Dr. Todd, who are all fairly new, have the expertise to handle the pandemic. You have the lead, well, former lead epidemiologist believing otherwise. I'd like to thank Commissioner Jung for taking the initiative after much prodding to ask the sheriff for an update on what he is doing to protect the inmates from the COVID-19 virus. It's true, as she says, that jail is his area of expertise. It is also true that the NRS 211.020 mandates it as your job to take all necessary precautions against escape, sickness, or infection. You may not like it, but there's no escaping that. An up, an update should have been requested long ago from the sheriff about the COVID-19 situation. These community members matter, do they not? You don't have to be an expert to actually go up and talk to the people who are confined there. You can't get better input than from those who are living it. Again, I submit these comments because I don't want another family to bury their loved one like my family had to bury my brother. Thank you.
And that's all the public comment we are aware of via email or via voicemail.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any joining us via Zoom? Okay, seeing no public comment via Zoom this morning, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. It is, we are on to item four. Mr. Manager.
Item four is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information for topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything that you would like to add this morning?
I do not this morning, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, I have Commissioner Herman signed in.
Thank you, Chair. I heard on the radio this morning that the sheriff's office and the jail is, has the COVID-19 under control. So, just kind of seemed like some good news. A gentleman, concerned citizen from Lemon Valley called me yes, the other day, and he had just put in an air purification system for businesses, and he was for businesses opening, and he was suggesting that maybe some, like the malls that wanted to open and, and help their, their people that had businesses within the mall. And he said that this system that he put in was 99% effective against viruses, which was encouraging. And so maybe that would be something that would help some of these malls get their businesses going again. So, that's just a suggestion. And then I noticed that Reno was receiving some money from, I think it's EPA or EDA, for cleanup, pollution cleanup of ground systems. And I was just thinking that maybe if they have some, some funding left over, they might want to do a little study of the, the contamination in Lemon Valley. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jung or Commissioner Hartung on the phone, do you have anything you'd like to add this morning?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. All right. Seeing nothing from any other commissioners, we will move on to our first item on the agenda. This is item five. So, Mr. Manager.
Item five is a discussion and possible reconsideration based on new developments and available medications for the treatment of COVID-19 of April 18th, 2020. Direction to the Washtau County District Attorney's Office to file an amicus or similar legal brief on behalf of the county in support of the Nevada Osteopathic Medical Association and Dr. Bruce Fong's legal challenge to the Nevada State Board of Pharmacies March 23rd, 2020 emergency regulation banning chloroquine and hydroxychloroquine prescriptions for the treatment of COVID-19, except in cases of hospitalization. An amicus brief is a document submitted by a non-party to a lawsuit that is intended to outline legal arguments and authorities for the benefit of the court and ruling on the legal issues involved. Noma presented its challenge by letter to the BOP in April, on April 9th, 2020, asking it to pass upon the validity of the regulation pursuant to NRS 233B dot 110 and assert its invalidity in various statutory and constitutional grounds. Noma's challenge seeks to allow licensed healthcare providers to prescribe these medications to treat people with COVID-19 regardless of hospitalization.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I want to take an opportunity to open this up before we have discussion. This was a, this was a call on my behalf to the board when we initially brought this forward, and a couple of weeks passed. This isn't a very, the COVID-19 situation has been a very rapidly changing situation day to day. And the initial intent of our reasoning to support a amicus brief of the Noma lawsuit was to protect the doctor-patient relationship and make sure that we were able to provide our residents and our citizens the ability to receive the treatment they may need with their provider as they saw fit. However, things have changed dramatically with that, and I feel that based upon discussions that I've had with legal professionals, medical professionals, and as we've seen, the change in drugs and treatment options become readily available. This was never about a political push. This was never about a, our, a bias one way or the other. This was purely about the medicine, and the medicine has changed. And as we've seen, the addition of redisevere as a viable option for treatment and some other treatment plans become available, I think it's prudent at this time that we, this board reassess and reconsider moving forward with the amicus brief. I believe that the state of Nevada and the governor's office have done everything in their power to address this ever-growing and changing concern from day to day. I want to continue to commend the state and their ability to work with the county on this process. This was, as I had said, this is never a political thing, and I never intended it to be. This was always about the pure understanding of a definition between a public, a private citizen and that provider of health for them. So, with that, I wanted to make that statement on the record. I did have, I have some other comments to make, but I'm going to open this up for discussion with the board. I do have the Vice Chair signed in first. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, from my, my stance was when we did this and remains that, that I don't care what the president thinks on this issue. My position had nothing to do with the President of the United States or anything else. My, my position has everything to do with respecting patient dignity and privacy, which is a long American tradition, that the issues of healthcare are between a patient and their doctor, not between the public, and it's certainly not a political issue. I thought then, and I think now, that treatment and prescribing decisions should remain between doctors and their patients. And when these drugs are obtained under a doctor's supervision, there is less likelihood of hoarding and not more. And so that, that was my whole reason for supporting the amicus brief. I have since then learned some things that are going on with the Noma and their attorney and, and things they're working with that have made me more than a little unhappy. And so I, you know, I, I feel fairly strongly that I still think doctors should be able to prescribe legal drugs to their legal patients, and I don't, I don't change that position. However, I do think that for the good of the overall county issues, it's probably a good idea to pull this amicus brief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Jung, do you have any statements or comments you'd like to make at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Commissioner Hartung.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, my, I, like Commissioner Burke Bigler, like Vice Chair Burke Bigler, I feel the same. This is, this is about physicians' rights, but it has, it has been politicized. That was never the intent, and, and, and I think it's prudent at this time to just go ahead and pull the brief because it's, it's just turning into something that we had never intended. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only a request at this time for direction from the district attorney's office on what my position, what I do here in this role. And then, most importantly, direction to staff, this has to come back to the agenda sooner rather than later, a policy navigation and recommendation for when the Washtau County should ever file an amicus brief. That way, that can guide us, that can guide all of us when people, you know, they light us up and we get passionate about something, and I, listen, if you didn't have passionate leaders, I don't think you are very good leaders, frankly. So, this just gives us all some lanes to stay in, I think. And I don't think I've ever supported an amicus brief, just so everybody knows that. Sometimes we have to do that. An attorney-client, I remember one in particular, and I, I just never have supported that. I think we, we, we need to be very careful with those, but I, I also believe that it's every right as an elected official to put things on agendas and have a talk, and if you can get the majority to rule, that's the way democracy works. It's majority rule. We don't throw rocks afterwards and try to destroy what the majority has ruled or do underhanded behaviors. We just walk away and say, I did my best, but they're still my colleagues, and I respect that they have voters who respect them enough that they elect them. So, I have more discussion after the vote is taken and after I get some direction as to how I handle this vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. You know, I wanted to provide another update, too, in regards to the discussion. As I said, this COVID-19 issue has continually evolved day in and day out. I did have an opportunity to speak with a district board of health member, which is Dr. Rika Renko. She is a hospitalist and has a very unique understanding of this. And as the, we continually see, all the commissioners and, and the public do see the press releases that are coming out of our joint information center from the Washtau County Health COVID, Health Response, we are seeing that our hospitals are not, are still at, you know, 50 to 60% occupancy through, and that our ICUs still are about 50% occupied. We do have still capacity, and the intent initially was to protect those facilities so that the costs would not be impair, you know, would be impactful to the county as we move forward. We have not seen those costs rise. We have not seen those numbers rise. Think, we are very thankful for that, and, and the community's continued support to flatten the curve. And the addition of these new treatments, and through what Dr. Renko had submitted to me, is that those discussions are, that most of these treatments that are out there right now are not being utilized by the CDC, are not being recommended by the CDC or even utilized within the hospital due to some of the toxicity levels of hydroxychloroquine and chloroquine. So, they have not really moved forward with some of those discussions, and that the CDC does not recommend that. And that you're seeing many of the hospitals not even, that they're still advocating for a normal course of action and normal treatment for their, their patients. Now, every doctor is different, but we should acquiesce to just that, as we've said here from the dais, that it is the doctors and patients' relationship to do so, and now that there are many treatments available, we feel that that is no longer an issue. So, I have no further discussion to say on the item. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not aware of any changes that happened here. I wasn't, anyhow, back to the doctor-patient issue, very, very important, and that's something that doctors could recommend for their patients, and, and it's, it's up to them to do that. That's a right. I with Commissioner Jung would really like to, well, I'm thinking that maybe we should take this item and bring it back at another agenda because, although it sounds like I'm going to be outvoted, but, because we don't have the legal advice that I think that we need regarding this legal action that we asked for, and now we're changing our mind. So, that's, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. And I appreciate the comments this morning. You know, obviously, one of the costs to the county would have been, if we would have had to stand up, alternative care sites and fund some of these other things, had we seen a surge. And since we're, like I said, since we're not seeing that now, I no longer see the relevance in us moving forward with an amicus brief. And so that is my stance on this. So, at this point, I would, I think that as we continue to move forward, we need to obviously reconsider this today. Since I initially brought this forward, I'm going to make a motion that the board remove its consideration for filing an amicus brief and remove itself from any challenges of the pharmacy board by, in the way of Noma. And so before we do that, too, I'd like to read for, I'd like to have our district attorney, Mr. Watts Vial. If you could please read into the record the process for reconsideration, reconsideration for the record, please.
Sure. So, this is looking at the rules of the board that were done in, I believe, 2017, and it was Rule 7.3. And Rule 7.3 says, "A motion to reconsider any action by the commission may be made only during the meeting at which the action was taken or at the next regularly scheduled meeting within no more than 25 days of the meeting at which the action was taken. A motion to reconsider must be made by a commissioner who voted on the prevailing side of the motion being reconsidered, but a motion to reconsider may be seconded by any member of the commission. A previous motion failing by virtue of a tie, that's not applicable, so I won't bother reading that." Okay, so that's the, those are the key aspects to the rule.
Thank you, sir. And I think, I think all the commissioners understand that, and I thank you for putting that on the record. So, with that being said, I will consider, reconsider, once, once again, restate my motion. My motion is to remove our support for a, the consideration of filing an amicus brief in regards to support of the Noma lawsuit against the pharmacy board at this time. I'll be looking for a second. I have a second from the Vice Chair. I have a motion from myself, second from the Vice Chair. Any further discussion?
Public comment, and I have discussion.
Okay. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk? I don't see any public comment from either the, all right. Commissioner Jung?
Yep. I just want to say in very general strokes, and then bring it down to specifics that we are at today, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, and fellow commissioners, and that is, I believe, as a leader and a person who's responsible for about a half million people together, one of the most important things we should hold all leaders accountable for and give them the room for is the right to change their mind. Because I'm going to tell you something, I reserve that every minute of my life, because data comes in that fast, and I have the right to change my mind. This should be applauded, celebrated, and respected, and not something that is considered shameful or unleaderlike. This is exactly what I look for in a leader, and this is exactly what I believe we miss a lot in the old school way of doing politics at the local level and the national level. So, bravo, Mr. Chairman, and I think you're doing a great job. And I thank you, Madam Vice Chairwoman, and I thank you, fellow commissioners, for entertaining another hearing of this. I am in the affirmative when the vote is taken. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion carries with all commissioners voting in the affirmative and Commissioner Herman in the opposition. So, I thank you for your, everybody considering this at this time, but we, I appreciate everybody's consideration, and I wish the best of luck to Noma in their, their lawsuit, but we'll move forward from that. All right, Mr. Manager. We, at this time, I am going to pull item six from the agenda. We do not have the ability to hear this today, and I'm recommending that we bring this back with the support of the district attorney's office at a later time and date if need be. So, I'm going to pull this from the agenda. Item six will not be heard today. We will move on to item seven, sir.
Item seven is an update on Washtau County's COVID-19 Road to Recovery. Presentation update and discussion of the county's response to COVID-19 and the governor's roadmap to recovery and possible action or direction to staff on proceeding into Phase One of the recovery, led by County Manager Eric Brown and County Commissioner Von Hartung.
All right. Mr. Manager, so I will let you take us right into this, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, and to the commissioners, the plan for today, we felt that we would have direction from the governor's office with regards to the requirements or the criteria for reopening businesses. It appears that the governor has called a press conference for later today, 3:00 PM, where he will share additional information in that regard. So, this item, we're not going to get into the level of presentation that we originally intended, simply because we need to see what the state is presenting and tailor it to our needs here in the county. I, I do think it's, it's important for the public to know that this commission has been actively engaged in working with the governor's office, working across the region with our stakeholders in other jurisdictions, to think through the issues involved with how do we open up intelligently here in northern Nevada in a manner that continues to support the CDC's guidance around social distancing and proper sanitation methods so that our, our public remains safe. So, I, and, and for those of you who, who don't know, the commissioners are working tirelessly to make sure that that happens. And I want to particularly call out Chairman Lucy's leadership in this regard. He's been participating in the state's LEAP Task Force, which has been developing the guidelines for reopening that we'll see. And also Commissioner Hartung, who has worked very progressively with stakeholders around the region to make sure that we're thinking about how to do this in an intelligent fashions that benefits not only the businesses but public safety. We, again, we do expect the governor's announcements later today. We have had the ability, I, I should back up and say, I also want to thank members of my staff, particularly ACM's Solaro and Thomas, as, as well as others who have been actively involved in trying to think through how we open up intelligently and who are engaged in conversations with the business community and other members of the northern Nevada community to make sure that we're, we're listening to the needs and opportunities that are out there. So, Mr. Chair, at this point, those would be my remarks, and maybe we give Commissioner Hartung an opportunity also to speak on some of his efforts with regards to developing a county-specific opening framework.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. And, you know, I want to thank Mr. Brown. Manager Brown has done a lion's share of this work. I have, I have watched him work tirelessly, day in, day out, weekends, nights, take phone calls all hours of day to work with staff and individuals to make sure that the county is prepared, not only from the local business level, but also the 2,800 employees in which he manages. He has done a phenomenal job doing that, and he's, he has done it with great grace and balance that you would expect in a leader. And I can't thank him enough for his continued support and leadership through this process. It's because of his ability to keep many, many people calm and his, his great demeanor that has allowed us to move through this in a very efficient manner. So, Mr. Manager, thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Hartung, I will give you an opportunity. I do would like for you to share some thoughts on what you have been working with the regional stakeholders and members throughout the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. But I, I want to take an opportunity first to thank you, Manager Brown, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Solaro, Ms. Voeva, Mr. Brazel over at the Health District, members of the Reno City Council, members of the Spark City Council, the Chamber for even entertaining my thoughts. And I, I just, I just really appreciate everything that, that you guys have done collectively. And everyone, everyone has done collectively. I mean, this is a, this is a Herculean lift. It is not easy. We, our, our whole concern was public health and safety, but we're also very concerned with keeping businesses viable. If we, if we don't get businesses open fairly quickly, that they, they will not survive, and ergo, their employees will have to find other places to work and be employed. Our whole goal was to look at methodologies that had been used for essential businesses and try to apply those to nonessential businesses. And I, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll see many of those methodologies in, in what the governor's going to release this afternoon. I know everybody's been working on kind of the same thing. It's interesting how we've all kind of thought about this in the same way, and, but I've just been very grateful, sir, for you allowing me and, and the, the county to allow me to even interject my thoughts. And, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I appreciate it. And it's really been, as the, the manager pointed out, this has been an effort by all commissioners. I think all of us have continued to receive phone calls day in and day out about how we open businesses. We've all been businesses. We've all been in conversations with our fellow colleagues at the cities in discussing plans. And there's not one of us, not one, not one elected official that sits on either board, whether it's a city council, it's Reno or Sparks, here at the Washoe County Commission, the Health Board, that aren't concerned about the public safety and wellness of all of our residents here, the 480,000 people that we have that reside within Washoe County, but also the businesses that they own and, and are patrons at. Those individuals, we want to make sure that everybody has the ability to continue to survive, not only from this COVID-19 pandemic, but also survive any kind of economic downfall that may come. And so with that, I look forward to the governor's comments this afternoon. He has been, like I said, extremely helpful and receptive to the county's discussion and the city's discussions, and everybody's participating in this from associations across the state. I think that we will see some wonderful things, I'm hoping, this afternoon from the governor. And he is, I want to thank him again for his leadership in a very trying time. People, it's easy to, very, very easily to throw stones at these individuals, but until you've sat in the seat and understand the stress and the challenges that each individual has to go through to make these decisions, they are not easy to come by, and they take a lot, a lot of time. And I can assure you, he's, him and his staff have done that. So with that, we look forward to the 3:00 p.m. press conference from the governor, and hopefully we will be able to disseminate information for everybody very soon after that. All right. With nothing, yes, Mr. Mr. Commissioner Hartung?
I, I'd like to just give one more thought of thanks. I'd like to thank all the family members. Your family, I know for a fact, has suffered through this. I, I know Mr. Manager's family and, and our staff's families have, have suffered. And I, I know, I've, I've had numerous conversations with council members from both Reno and Sparks, and, and how their family members have, have had to endure the amount of time that everyone has put in. I can only imagine the governor and his staff, the amount of time that, that they've all had to put in. So I, I just want to, I want to do a shout out to all the families out there that, that have endured us throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I appreciate that. And yes, Madam, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I think I take the opportunity also to thank all of our frontline fire, firemen, our police, our sheriff, all of, not just ours here at the county, but from all three of the entities here, the, both of the cities also, and, and in other areas throughout our county. I know there have been, we have been inundated with California visitors in Gerlach and in Incline Village and Crystal Bay. And, and our people have worked hard to make sure that we are keeping our own residents safe, and that's not an easy task. And I know they've done a really super job. And I especially want to thank the sheriff and his team for the work they've done for us up in Incline Village to kind of control a lot of the traffic that's coming in, because people are moving out and about, and they're tired of being locked up, and they want to be out and about. And that has really created a lot of problems for us. So I, I'm really grateful to all the work that they're doing, and I just want to make sure we tell them thank you, and also the people at the Health District and the National Guard, all of those guys, all those frontline people, they are doing yeoman's work for us.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments, ma'am?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo what the commissioners have stated about our workers, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention those Washoe County staff who may not have a gun or a badge or work in a fire department, who are also deemed essential, who have to come to work and put themselves at risk in a job they never thought they'd be at risk at, and also don't receive that type of pay. And then I want to go a little bit more broad. Every person who works in janitorial services, food service workers, all of those people, too, are putting their lives at risk. So I mustn't forget them. And those are the people that are unsung heroes even pre-COVID-19. And then I have one piece of policy I want to put just another nudge and a suggestion and, and some action, I believe. When it comes to the COVID-19 issue, is can we get Congressman Amadee or one of the staff members to either come to a meeting, or if they don't want to do it publicly, I get that, too. Can we, can we get an update from their staff directly and give them some feedback? Because here's one structural problem I find with the way we run the government in the United States of America. Why is FEMA money something local government has to put up first, and then hope we get in line and that our Congress people will act and have enough votes to get us reimbursed? Why aren't we given the money from FEMA and then we reimburse them? And I get it. I know it goes back to local control, but local control at this cost is not worth it anymore. And we really don't have local control, because everything we do, we have to say, yes, thank you very much, State Legislature, NRS, and Governor. So I just want to know, I want to start having a conversation, and I want to know where we're at on our FEMA reimbursement from, you know, five years ago, and how we can move that dial. And, and again, an overall policy question at the federal level. And then finally, while we're on COVID, this is the advice I would give to District 3 constituents and anybody who cares to listen, which is every day you manage risk. You did it yourself pre-COVID-19. You know how to keep yourself safe. You know who's, you could potentially hurt in your own family or in your chain of your bubble, as they're now calling it. So, you know, use the data and the information wisely, and do everything you can to keep your risk low, such as, you know, you wear a seatbelt every day. We know that that, that, that does save lives. So that's, that's my, my message to everyone. And listen, I know Washoe County citizens, and I think you're the smartest citizens in all of Nevada and maybe the western region. So you know how to take care of yourself. You always have, you always will. And if you have questions about managing risk, call me. I'll help you walk through the decision tree. I've made a couple of them for people, because I get a lot of those phone calls. And I, you know, I don't know what, what level you like to risk your life. We're all different with that, too. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for all you've done. I know that you have been working 24/7. And I always say, what can I do to help? What can I do to help? And I get it. To get me to get up to speed and online, it takes me just as much time to keep going. So, but I'm here, whatever you need, and whatever any other commissioners or their constituents need, call me. And anything. And I know how to do contactless, contact and list delivery. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I appreciate that. Commissioner Herman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the comments that have been made. Everybody has, you know, is understanding the seriousness of what's going on. But the most special thank you I want to give is to all our wonderful citizens who, I agree with you, Commissioner Jung. They, they have suffered more than, than we know. There are many that have lost their jobs. They can't get unemployment. They, they are losing their businesses, which just were starting up after the eight years we had. We've got so many losses that they've endured, and yet they, they followed all the rules. They stayed in their houses. They tried to do all the distancing and, and all that. And they are, most of them are the heroes, too. They're, they're giving up a whole lot to help a lot of other folks. So thank you, citizens. You're great. You're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right. Seeing no further discussion, I don't have any public comment signed in. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Do I have anything on Zoom? Seeing nothing on Zoom, I will close public comment. This was for possible action, but since there is really nothing to taking action on, I'm not going to take a motion, or I will just move past this at this point. We are on to Item 8. Mr. Manager?
Item 8 is a closed session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations with Washoe County and/or Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District per NRS 288-220. If necessary, staff recommends motion to recess for a closed labor session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations with Washoe County Truckee Meadows Management Representatives pursuant to NRS 288.220. At the conclusion of the closed session, the meeting will then be adjourned.
All right. And it is my understanding this morning that we do have need for a closed labor session with our representatives. So I would look for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we go into recess for the purposes of a closed session, a closed labor discussion session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Burke Bigger, second from Commissioner Herman. I will call for, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will be, we will do, I'm going to take our final public comment now and then do another public comment before we close the doors. So, Madam Clerk, is there any public comment that has signed in?
No, sir.
Do we have public comment via Zoom? It's a voicemail. We do have a voicemail that's been submitted. Do we know who the voicemail is from? Okay. Play the voice, we'll play the voicemail. Hopefully, the, the individual will identify themselves. And if they do not, we'll have to stop that, the, the voicemail, because we won't allow to put that on the record. So hopefully, they will have identified themselves. Please play it.
This is Andy Chapman, President, CEO, the Incline Village, Crystal Bay Visitor Bureau. This comment is for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners meeting on May 7th, Item Number 6, excuse me, Item Number 7 on the COVID-19 Road to Recovery. My only comment is that we would certainly hope to work with the commissioners and county staff in how we could potentially look at the Incline, Crystal Bay area in the somewhat different transitional process as opposed to the county as a whole, and are interested in, in how we might be able to bifurcate our region from the rest if necessary and if desired. But would appreciate the opportunity to have those conversations, and would like to reiterate the hard work that the commissioners and the staff have been doing through this, through this entire process. It's very much appreciated for our region as a whole. But again, would like to see how we could potentially look at the Incline, Crystal Bay area of Washoe County in a somewhat different scenario, if again needed and discussed and appropriate. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate Andy Chapman submitting that public comment. All right. I'm going to go to county managers and commissioners and county managers' announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything else this afternoon?
Nothing this morning.
This morning. Geez, thank you, sir. It's just day to me. It's day, night, day, night.
It's okay. It's all right.
You know, they all run together anymore, day and night. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to see if we can get Mr. Manager. Let's see if we can't get you and, and the chairman on with Mr. Chapman, because I need to know what it is they want to see different in Incline versus Crystal Bay versus what we're doing in the rest of the area. I'm getting a lot of feedback from a number of people. So I do think that that's something we need to get a close look at. Thank you.
Okay. We will definitely bring that back. Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Jung?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Jung, do you want to, do you have something you'd like to add today?
Maybe after you.
Okay. Well, I want to say, I'll take this time to say first, happy birthday belated to Madam Vice Chair. She celebrated a birthday, and as every male understands, you never say which birthday it is, but we want to say thank you and happy birthday, and we hope you enjoyed your birthday on Saturday, whatever number that was. We know you look not a day over 35, so we, it's got to be somewhere there. But we love you and hope you enjoyed your Saturday and was able to spend that time, unfortunately, in a COVID-free, you know, environment, but to get to spend some time and celebrate your birthday. And to all the mothers out there this weekend, we want to send a special thanks. I want to send in a special thanks, first and foremost, to the most important mother in my life, which is my wife, who is raising my two beautiful children. She spends a tireless time running as my co-partner, but my, the parent to my children, because I'm, like I said, most of the time here, and she's been doing a lion's share of the work at home and running her business and helping here at the county. She does a number of, wears a number of hats, but mostly she is a phenomenal mother. And to my mom, who has also been a rock in my life, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. We really do appreciate all the work you do, and the ladies that are, are really the true rock and pillar on our society, in my opinion. So thank you for, for that. So, Commissioner Jung, I know you probably need to make something to add.
Yeah, I just, that's beautiful, Mr. Chairman. And I, I wanted to say, you know, we all came from mothers, so we all definitely have a very, very close relationship with women to begin with in our whole entire lives. And to my mother, I want to say, the thing I miss the most about COVID-19 is I can't hug and kiss you every day. So I can't wait till that becomes a reality. Love you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right. Seeing nothing further, I want to thank everybody for joining us via Zoom today. This has been a difficult time. Please stay safe out there. Please tune in this afternoon at 3:00 p.m. for the governor's press conference, who will have lots of information, I'm sure, for everybody. And we will see you next week, next Tuesday. We are adjourned, we are in recess, and we'll adjourn after our labor session. Thank you.